Welcome, everyone. Welcome back from break to our April 12th City Council Work Session. And welcome to folks at home and Brenda. No. So, the first item up today is committee reports and items of interest to the mayor, city council, and city manager. And I'll start it out. Even though I did get out of town for 10 days, there seems to be an awful lot of things that have been going on. So, I'll go back to and thank everybody from our staff and the county and all our social service agencies for all the hard work that was done on Project Homeless Connect. It went very well and we really appreciate it. I don't think I told you, we had a delegation from Kakagawar Sister City here. So, they came by to visit. And, let's see, Saturday was Arbor Day. And so, we removed, they removed some concrete and planted some trees in front of where the Eugene Weekly building is. So, thanks to, I said, "That's a good place to dig some dirt." No, well, anyway.
Oh, God.
But I wanted to thank Mark Snyder and the Tree Foundation. And we celebrated 31 years of being a Tree City this year. I also wanted to mention that there was the Park Foundation Dinner on Friday, right? And it was, it was a very nice occasion and joined by many of you. And I want to thank all the members of Park Foundation who do so much work for us. And then, on Saturday, we also had the Human Rights Summit. And we had a kickoff on Thursday and then all day Saturday. And I want to thank all of our staff that worked so hard on that. That was a great turnout and I'll be looking forward to hearing from them. Participated in a climate forum with Commissioner Sorensen and Representative Barnhart and Mary Wood and Tim Rehn from the University of Oregon. And then, I just, looking forward, want to say on the 20th of April, we're having what is called the We Gene Awards, a recognition of people from our neighborhood associations and volunteers in our neighborhoods who contribute so much to the work of the city. And we're grateful for them. And on the 27th, we'll be the mayor's one-on-one. And that's going to be at 29th at the Rite Aid there on 29th in Willamette, right? So, hope to see people there. Who is?
I'll be there.
You'll be there. Great. Betty will be there with me. Okay. That's my stop for today. Betty?
Well, every place I've been, the mayor has been. Except at Ashland. I didn't see her there. Tree planting, I was there. It was great.
Thank you for that.
Excellent occasion. The Parks Awards was good. Senator Merkley made an excellent speech at City Club on Friday. And I think he's going, he's becoming one of the senators I think will be highly respected. I met with the auditor on Tuesday. Is that the day we met Mike?
The day we were intended to meet. Betty, you did a wonderful job.
We sat there and waited for Mike. The, I attended the National League of Cities Convention right after break started. And the, we did a lot of lobbying, a lot of studying. Human Development Committee, of which I'm vice chair, is working mainly on workforce reinvestment at the current time and on the Elementary High Education Act, which is the successor, well, it was before No Child Left Behind. Now, it's turned back to, from No Child Left Behind. And there are some, will probably be some improvements. I was on the task force, on the NLC Task Force for No Child Left Behind. Some of the things we recommended are being adopted. Some of the worst things about that act are perhaps going away. We'll be continuing work on immigration reform, which some of the staff think may have a better chance now that health care has happened. I'm also on the NLC University Communities Council. This is not the same as one of the main committees. There are seven committees in HD. Human Development's one of those. But this is University Communities Council. And there was a lot of talk about cooperation, which I think some places they're having, I know that Kitty meets with, with people from the university, but I think it might be good if more of us did. And there was, the emphasis this time seemed to be, well, some communities are talking about complaints because they're overrun by the university. If it's a small community, it's all university. But a lot of talk about using the knowledge that's available at the university. And I think that we don't do enough of that, really, about how you can use that without offending the staff people in order to help staff people who are knowledgeable in those The League of Oregon Cities went on a lobbying trip to gather the other people from Oregon. And we were talking mainly about jobs and some about housing and about transportation. And I think I am out of time. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Okay. Well, I, it would appear that I took the term "break" more literally than.
For you.
So, I did very little. I did attend the mayor's prayer breakfast, or I'm sorry, it's now called the Lane County Prayer Breakfast. And we had a great speaker who was just a, he's a phenomenal author and a great speaker. And he talked about the heritage of our faith. And it was a good event. I also attended the Metropolitan Wastewater Management Commission meeting. And then, finally, I attended a meeting of the, I attended to testify at the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. It's come to my attention that if you live in west of Highway 99, it's very difficult to get your bike over the railroad tracks and over Highway 99 to get downtown or get anywhere. Once you can get over the railroad tracks, you can go anywhere. But there are only two points to get across railroad tracks. Both are pretty scary, pretty tired, and pretty far apart from each other. So, the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee is currently, is about to undergo a review of the master plan. And so, I went to testify to ask them to sort of put that higher up on their radar to try and address those issues in the master plan. And it was a great group of people, just really energetic about their commission. And it was very fun to have we was there and David Sonics and all sorts of folks I've come to know over the years. So, that's it. That's what I did.
Thank you. George?
Thanks. I went to Police Commission meeting last week and the, we finished up the TASER, this TASER policy review is finished. And we accepted it and we, you know, had different motions and tried to tweak the language one more time. And so, it's a done deal and we should be getting that, I guess. And I don't know where we'll take it, but we will review it and then I guess get, kick it back to the chief. And so, after 10 months, that's done. Personally, it's flawed. It's not perfect. I think it's an improvement over what happened before, but it's, I don't think it's all the way there yet. But they worked really hard to see what everyone thinks when we get it. I went to Homeless Connect and sat at the Police Commission table. Needless to say, that didn't get a lot, awful lot of visitors. It was mostly, well, the people are there for, to get the services. You know, they're there for the services and they're not there for, like, to complain about the police or to praise the police or, you know, the Human Rights Table was right there and that didn't get very many visitors either. And then, I went to the Human Rights Summit this Saturday at LCC, the main campus. And it was a pretty good event. Most of the people at the tables were asked to pick three of what you thought the top three human rights problems in Eugene are. We may think, "Oh, it's pretty good here. There's not a lot of," I mean, we did pretty well, better than many other towns. Homelessness was brought up time and time again. And that, having been Homeless Connect, it's like, in listening to the public safety task teams, it's just like homelessness is always mentioned. It kind of comes up to the top. And I just see that we're not really, we're not trying to devote more resources to it this year. Of course, we have a huge deficit, budget deficit, try to, you know, just balance the budget. But I don't know. I think, I think in the future, we need to do what we can to devote more resources to that because it just seems like it's at the root cause of many, many other problems that end up costing, not only is it be the right thing to do, but also the other problems cost the city a lot of money. Just, you know, it's kind of the bottom line that way. Thank you.
George Pauling?
Well, I took the same approach that Jennifer did on the spring break this time. I did attend the Travel Lane County Board meeting last month. And Friday, my wife and I will be playing in a fundraising golf tournament for McCormick Elementary. Every year, they send their, I believe it's their sixth graders to Washington DC and it's pretty much done all on their own. And they're having a fundraising golf tournament at Shadow Hills this Friday. So, my wife and I will be playing in that. If anybody's interested, they can either get ahold of, I believe, Shadow Hills or the elementary school and they can direct you to the right people to get involved in that.
They rake my leaves to make money for that.
So, and went to the Harlem Neighborhood Association meeting last month. And on the agenda that they mailed out, I was going to speak on the possible merger of the two fire departments. So, I ended up bringing along Chief Groves and Chief Walker from Springfield Fire Department. And they did a real good presentation to the Harlem Neighborhood Association about the possibilities and where we are and what we're doing and things of that nature. And also, at that meeting, E-Web was doing a presentation of the Riverfront project. So, I excused myself from the meeting. So, if there's any question at this point, I just, I just told the people that, you know, because of the situation, the quasi judicial, that I just, you know, left the meeting at that point. I didn't want to accidentally expose myself to any unnecessary contacts or comments. So, other than that, I did get to spend a week with my mom. She came down for a visit. She's 92 years old and she stayed with us for a week while my sister and my brother-in-law took a trip. So, that was kind of a fun break for me.
Thanks. Chris?
Great, yeah. To kind of work backwards, I think in chronological order, the Parks Dinner was fabulous. It was really great. In fact, one of the things that was really significant to me was the kind of recognition by being in the room that so much of the support for Parks is based on the philanthropy of a significant group of folks who have the money, have the wherewithal, and have the conscientiousness in the community to provide that support. Also went on Housing Policy Board Allocation Committee tours to look at the location for the next allocation for money to provide for low-income housing. And during that tour, we also toured some of the facilities that have just recently been open to kind of get an idea of what, how these, how modern, current projects are being built and how they might fit into the new site. So, a lot of this land banking property that Eugene has been so great at assembling, we're now beginning to put into play as money from the feds and other sources coming to help us build things. And so, that was actually a very exciting tour. The West Eugene MX Quarter Study Committee has met a couple of times. What's nice about those are they're starting to get some interest, a lot more people are attending, and the process is a lot more robust. This very last meeting, we were looking at the 13th Street option. I'm not saying any one of them is the frontrunner at this point, but we're getting really good detailed information. And I can sit in my seat and watch Georgia's business run, so I can keep an eye on how things are going over at the Kiva. It's right across the street. So, it's right downtown where people can get to it very easily. Attended the news conference at the Chamber of Commerce on policing, which I thought was a great one. The mayor was there and as was the chamber. And I thought it was a nice effort to try to begin to shape some of the solutions that were involved there. I thought, I thought it was very good. It links, again, also to Homeless Connect for me because, as we've talked about before, homelessness is a condition and the public safety issues downtown are behaviors. And we don't want to get the two confused, but we recognize they're two parts of a similar problem and that they have to be addressed in different ways. So, I think the news conference and Homeless Connect are really fingers on the same hand as us beginning to get traction as we approach the problem. Attended the Metro Partnership Dinner, which I thought was also a very good, very good event. Oh, by the way, the mayor shook a ton of hands at Homeless Connect. I mean, I was impressed. She was right there shaking everybody's hand that came in. That was, that was pretty good. And then, the last thing I wanted to mention is, Lane Council of Governments is launching an effort to begin to determine what the Council of Governments could do on initiative efforts. One of them is around human services and how ElCog might be able to have a hand in helping to preserve, sustain human services. Another one is how to enhance communication and interaction between the different jurisdictions and different bodies. And then, the third one is around economic development and job creation and financial sustainability, I mean, economic sustainability. Brenda is one of the participants in that and very, and it's been great that we've had participation by not only staff members from jurisdictions, but also other areas. And I see my time is out, so I'll stop. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're a bunch of chatty Kathys today, aren't we?
Yeah.
That's cool.
Thank you. Nice to be back from break. Let's see, I spent most of my time off on the couch because I was sick. I had a really nasty bug and I really was disappointed I didn't go to Homeless Connect because I'm okay now.
Yes.
But I just, I was laying there with a blanket over my head and my grandkids were playing Cars on Me. I just thought, boy, I'm really lucky that I do have a home. And I thought about people who are homeless and how I would feel so bad if one of these people, if anybody got this bug, but let alone somebody who didn't have a place to be when they are sick. I did manage to get to a few things, though. I went to the town hall that was hosted at Willamette with Representative Hoyle Nathanson and Chris Edwards. That was pretty well-attended. I also went to the Lane Metro Workforce Dinner. And the reason I want to say that I was there, too, is because the business that was acknowledged was Nikosi Brewing, which is, which is in my ward. Got to meet those young men. I thought it was pretty, pretty cool what they've done and how many jobs they're bringing in and how they're kind of taking over that part of the, of the Whittaker. The Parks Foundation Dinner acknowledged John Brown, who I think is an awesome community volunteer, and the Baker Park Foundation. I think, you know, they're also strong members in the community. I thought that was a nice way to acknowledge them. I spent about two days at listening sessions with Bob and his crew at the neighborhood, at my Trainsong Neighborhood. I went to a small group of folks that had a, the ones of us that did the three-day training, there was several of us. So, that was, that was really nice checking with Bob, but it's pretty interesting, you know, when you talk about how we're rolling this forward into the community. So, I'm glad that he's doing work with us. Tomorrow, albeit, I'll wrap it. We start our budget cycle, so we'll be there about four hours. And I just want to say that the city seems really quiet because, is everybody at Conan O'Brien?
Maybe.
Maybe so. Apparently, everybody but us.
Yep.
Thank you. Coco? No? Go ahead.
I, too, went to the Metro Partnership Dinner. I went because Nikosi was being awarded that prize. No. Bobby Lee also got an award from the director, Jack Roberts, as the, his annual award to somebody. And maybe you know that Bobby Lee is a former counselor for the work he's done in creating community and helping to bridge the gap between the Green Company and the community and the city. And also, Wildish was awarded, Blong, an award as well for. And then, I also went to the Birthday Three Dinner. That was fun. I met with the folks on Save City Stadium. They actually have a pretty interesting idea and a plan that actually might take hold and work that they're going to try to put together and move forward and see. They have someone from Portland who's done this before and is well-connected, used to be with the Blazers and could possibly pull it off. So, that, we'll see what happens. They got to bring it to 4J first. But took a tour of the new arena. It's come along really nicely. It's huge, but it's really kind of cool. 27,000 yards of concrete. Yards. It's amazing. The, I also did, I'm the chair of the Metropolitan Plank Commission. And so, we got our meeting. We're going to discuss a lot of that in the next two items. I went to the Human Rights Summit as well on Saturday. Yeah, it was a great turnout, about 150 people.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it was really amazing. And I concur. Homelessness came up. We walked, we did tables and about the three different issues and homelessness came up over and over and over again. And then, and then, I was, last night, I went to the Mark Knopfler concert. He was awesome. The concert was such a great venue for that. He started kind of late and everybody was over 50, so, but he kept us all awake, so that was great. And there's a great lineup at the Cuthbert this year, including Free Symphony in the Park on Saturday, July 17th at the Cuthbert. So, marked out in your calendars. And then, I was glad health care passed while we were on break.
Garrison Keillor.
Mike. Try not to comment on the larger questions brought up here today, but.
Such restraint.
Yeah. I was, I was honored that the mayor asked me to go on her stead to the funeral service for private, Private Erin McLyman on March 25th, who is the Sheldon graduate who was killed on duty in Iraq. And had the chance to go and offer condolences to her family on behalf of all of us in the city. And it was a wonderful service and it was really moving. I had the chance on the 1st of April, the appropriate day, I think, for us to talk about ECLA, to go and meet with Bob Chadwick and, as Andrea had mentioned there as well, and talk about setting up some small group opportunities in North Eugene as well. Went and gave testimony at the CAPS meeting on Tuesday, April 6th, which was the group that's working to piece together some kind of potential solution to our county public safety challenges that Dave Fronmeyer and Jean Tate are chairing. They have quite a task before them, I think, and quite a challenge. And I hope they come up with something more than just another initiative to put on the fall ballot. And I think they will. They're getting a lot of good information from, and a lot of good public input on that. So, I think that could produce some, has the chance to produce something positive. I, too, was a, as a part of the Police Commission, was there on Thursday night for us to finish, finally, the TASER policy. And I think it was a good meeting, as George had mentioned. We spent the entire evening debating the particular parts of it. I made three motions to make some minor changes I thought would enhance the policy that passed. And I think it has, as George mentioned, it being flawed, but an improvement. I would tend to agree. I think it adds an element of restraint to our TASER policy, but at the same time, gives appropriate protection to the officers involved in, when it's time to use that tool, as well as to the members of the public, gives appropriate respect and appropriate parameters around its use. So, I felt at least pretty good about what we came up with and passed there, but we'll have a chance to talk more about that. I, too, had a chance to attend the prayer breakfast and felt the same way that you did about that, Jennifer. Was glad that Andrea mentioned that the Parks Foundation Dinner the other night, that I did not get to attend, but I honored the Baker family and John Brown for all of his work to help clean up the river, the Willamette River, and organize that effort, you know, for many, many years. I've rode with him only two of those years in his boat pulling stuff out of the river. And I can tell you, it's a ton of work that he has put into that, year after year after year. So, I was glad that he got that kind of recognition for that hard work, for somebody who cares so much about the Willamette River. I'm going to go over here, or maybe you need to, if you'll indulge me just a second, I have two more. Had a chance to speak to Ms. Liliengren's fourth grade class at Gillum Elementary School on Friday as well about how city government works and what a counselor does and how things get passed at the council. And I'd like to remind people that the next Cal Young Neighborhood Association meeting is this next Thursday, the 22nd, at Sheldon Community Center at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. And I think maybe at some point, if you could come here and tell us how government works, that might be nice.
I gave them the abbreviated.
Yeah. I won't be redundant on a variety of things that people have mentioned. But a couple other things. This is National Telecommunications Week, which really means our 911 operators and people at the communications center. And of course, they do extremely hard work and have a stressful job and appreciate their work. Also, National Library Week.
You'll talk about that at our council meeting tonight.
Right. We'll have that. And I just want to make a quick connection on that with the upcoming budget process. As you know, we're working through that. And as we've sent out information over the last several weeks, we are making some changes at the library. But one of the good news pieces is, is that we aren't changing the hours or recommending any reduction in any of the hours of the library. And just the, the impact of the library in this community is huge. And so, that's a real positive. Library Book Sale was this weekend and they, it's our primary fundraiser for the foundation. And as you know, they contribute quite a bit to the library. Human Rights Summit, big deal. Last week, I had a budget listening session with a variety of community members. We invited the chairs of all the neighborhoods and various committees and commission and had probably 25 to 30 folks there from Sustainability Community, Human Rights Planning Commission, Neighborhoods, et cetera. And had, I thought, a really nice discussion. People had an opportunity to talk a little bit about the budget and where we're headed with that. Wednesday, April 21st, there's an Anti-Hate Activity Public Forum. And it's going to be at the Baker Center Downtown here at the University of, University's Downtown Center, sponsored by the Human Rights and Police Commission. Want to say, April 28th, I'll be delivering my budget message to the Budget Committee. So, that's coming up very quickly. As you know, we have Wicked, the Broadway production is coming to the Holt Center soon. And coming up this week, they're doing a sneak preview for that. So, some of you may be involved with that later on this week. And then, I want to mention that on one of your consent calendar items is the Neighborhood Matching Grants. And the reason why I want to talk a little bit about it right now, great projects, by the way. But the other piece that's interesting is we're, we're really been, we use the triple bottom line tool as part of our evaluation of that particular program. You might remember this is one of the Sustainability Commission recommendations. We've been developed, been developing that tool. And we sent a memo, I think, in your packet last week. But this is kind of that, one of the first pilots out of the gate, using that tool for evaluating programs, policies, strategies, and those kinds of things. So, I just wanted to mention that to you. I know it's on consent calendar, so we may not get a chance to talk about it. And lastly, I just want to say a big thanks to several city employees that Kelly Osbourne supervises and the kind of the work that they've been doing lately. The Human Rights Summit, I had a chance to go over there. They did some wonderful work with Raquel and Holly. Michael Kinnison and the neighborhood have been doing some really super work around SNAPS as well as Neighborhood Grant Program. And Cindy Clark is part of that group and Reenie. And Shawna is over there working on accessibility issues. And then, Kevin Finney on the sustainability side, they have been working, doing yeoman's work, trying to work through some pretty significant projects as we move forward. And then, lastly, Franciska, who's, has been doing a lot of, at least, behind-the-scenes work on really connecting city and the police, particularly with the, with the community. And so, a lot of good work been going on.
So, just a couple more comments after listening to you. I really want to thank Mike for going and representing us at the funeral. And I just wanted people to know that I would have been there if I, I was out of town. But I really, I know we all think it's very important and wanted them to know of our care and concern. So, I really appreciate you being there on the part of all of us. I also wanted to, we certainly have a lot of work that needs to happen with the homeless issue. But I wanted to point out, in our new City Council Newsletter this week, I think it is, it talked about another housing, low-cost housing project for people with disabilities that we are currently working on. So, I think, and Chris talked about other things, we're working at it, but the hill is large.
It is.
It's large. And, but I did want to point, point that out. And I also thought we could round this out. Oh, and then, I want to respond just briefly to Betty's comments because they're also in the newsletter, I think it pointed out, or somewhere, we got an email that our neighborhoods joined with the University of Oregon staff and had a big, sort of, how you teach students about being good neighbors in the, in the community and tell them what all the, the access to all the things that they have to make them be, fit into our community and learn about living in Eugene. And our neighborhood folks and our staff folks are really working hard on that sort of town and, some of those town and gown issues. So, I thought I'd point that one, that one out. And then, of course, Bike Magazine choosing Eugene, Oregon as a number five out of the top 50 bike-friendly cities in the country. That's a good, so, now we just have to do what Jennifer wants and get that, that link.
We can move on.
Yep. All righty. So, we're going to move on now to our work session items. And the first item we have is the greenhouse gas emissions. we have is the greenhouse gas emissions legislative actions update, and I know Alan did some JEO meeting updates on that, and now Brenda's gonna bring us up to speed.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
Mayor and City Council for the record, Brenda Wilson, Intergovernmental Relations Manager. I have two additional documents that I would like to hand out, and I'll refer to them at the appropriate time. The first is a letter from the MPC to Gail Acterman, the Chair of the OTC, and John Van Landingham, and Counselor Zelenka requested that you have a copy of that. And the second is a timeline. So tonight, for this agenda item, I'm going to discuss the greenhouse gas emissions legislative actions that have occurred during the 2009 regular legislative session at the state legislature, as well as the 2010 special session. I'll talk about some of the mandates that have come out of those legislative actions, including what we are required to do, as well as what other parties are required to do. I'll update you on where we are with those actions and what we can expect next. So, in 2009, there were several bills that were introduced into the legislature to address greenhouse gas emissions as they are defined in state law. So for the purposes of the discussion during the legislative session, the greenhouse gas emissions were those gases that were anthropogenic gases that caused global warming, so really simply, global warming that's caused by humans. And the governor had an agenda item to address greenhouse gas on several fronts, but most importantly, on the transportation land use front. And there were several bills introduced, and as we started to go through the session, as with all sessions, those bills start to combine into one bill. And the bill that came out of the 2009 legislative session was House Bill 2001, also known as the Oregon Jobs and Transportation Act of 2009. And the primary purpose of that bill was to increase transportation revenues, and it in fact did do that. It increased the statewide gas tax, it gave us a window to increase ours, it increased registration fees, title fees, to increase the Highway Trust Fund. One of the concepts that was being discussed on the side was being pushed by several environmental groups, including 1,000 Friends, to require statewide action on how to deal with greenhouse gas emissions, especially where transportation and land use came together. The original concept for that would have mandated that all MPOs within the state, all six MPOs, be required to undertake some sort of action to address greenhouse gas emissions. It became quite clear, as that bill was moving through the legislative process, that there weren't the votes to get that passed, and the legislature and the governor could not afford to let that transportation funding package fail. And so, a discussion was had to reduce the entities that would be required to take action under House Bill 2001, and that was reduced to the metro area, because they were already engaged in least cost planning, to the Springfield Eugene metropolitan area, the Central Lane MPO, as well as the Salem Kaiser MPO. As we moved through the discussion, it was determined that there were several Salem Kaiser legislators that were going to refuse to vote for House Bill 2001 if they were included, and that left the metro area and the Central Lane MPO. I brought the amendment to you on May 13th of 2009, at which point you took a support position, a support if amended position, to be exact, and that was that I was to attempt to get that bill amended so that it did two things, that we would support the bill if it allowed local control or governance, so that we would have some control over how we would move through the process, and so that there would also be funding. In other words, we wouldn't be required to do it without the funding coming from the state, because that would be considered to us an unfunded mandate. I was able to get that bill amended so that it did do that, which is interesting, because the final bill, right before they were gonna vote on it, they claimed they accidentally left it out, but I, yes. Legislative Council did put it back in in the middle of the night after cornered her in the hallway. So, it did pass, and unfortunately, the environmental groups, especially 1,000 Friends, claimed that it wasn't good enough, and that they were going to undertake an effort to refer House Bill 2001 to the voters. To prevent that from happening by those groups, there was another bill that had been introduced early in the session, that would have directed the Environmental Quality Council to undertake some rulemaking to address greenhouse gas emissions. These were not specific things, but basically requiring automobile service stations to ensure that people's tires were properly inflated, to require retrofitting on certain trucks to make sure they were more aerodynamic. I mean, they were these types of suggestions. That bill was introduced on behalf of the governor. Because of its relating clause, it was the perfect vehicle to require some sort of greenhouse gas emission task force, and that bill was House Bill 2186. And in the final days of the legislature, it was gut and stuffed with a brand-new bill, and that bill created a 16-member greenhouse gas task force. So before we go on to that, I just want to mention that although House Bill 2001 was not referred by 1,000 Friends, a signature gathering effort did occur by some anti-tax groups. They were able last week to have their ballot title approved, and now they are gathering signatures, they have to gather approximately 110,000 by the first week of July, but if they are able to do so, it takes the gas tax increases to the votes, to the voters in the next election, and it would also be retroactive back to January 1st, 2009. So any increase that was not put to the voters would be repealed, and so that's certainly something that we want to keep our eyes on. The ability to gather 110 valid signatures by the second, or 2nd of July, I think, is a heavy lift, a very large lift, so we'll see how that goes. So, in order to get House Bill 2001 safe, House Bill 2186, like I said, created a 16-member statewide greenhouse gas emissions task force, and I included their final report. But basically what happened was, the bill dictated membership roster, and there were several different areas that they were drawing from, and one was from our MPO, and our very own Counselor Zelenka was elected, so to speak, to represent us on that greenhouse gas task force. Under the bill, they charged the greenhouse gas task force to come up with several things, and specifically to consider how we should, as a state, deal with greenhouse gas emissions for vehicles of 10,000 pounds or less. So basically, commuter vehicles, passenger vehicles, trucks, things like that, not the big trucks, just the passenger vehicles. So they were required under House Bill 2186 to study and evaluate alternative land use and transportation scenarios, which would still accommodate population growth and economic growth and employment growth, but still deal with greenhouse gas emissions, evaluate how we were going to pay for that, not only through financially, but how would we cover the resources that would be necessary, staff resources, that sort of thing, to come up with these scenarios? What are some of the impediments to implementing the scenarios and recommend legislation? So, at the beginning of the 2010 legislative session, they reported back to the legislature the findings of the greenhouse gas task force, and I included a copy of that in your packet, and if you're interested, the exact members are listed on page five. But Senate Bill 1059 was introduced on behalf of the President of the Senate, and it was pretty much unanimously opposed by absolutely everyone. Senator Courtney said he had promised a bill, he didn't say it would be a good one, and so, but it was a starting point for us, and we opposed it too. So, but in the end, as with all legislation, it came out to a point where we did, we did support it, and Senate Bill 1059 is the result of the greenhouse gas task force recommendations, and it directs several things. It directs the OTC to adopt statewide transportation strategy on dealing with greenhouse gas emissions to achieve our reduction goals. Specifically, there are eight things it specifically does. It directs the Oregon Transportation Commission to solicit public review and comment in the development of the statewide strategy. They are also to work in conjunction with the Oregon University System to figure out how to do that. It directs the ODOT and DLCD to establish guidelines for developing and evaluating the alternatives. It directs the ODOT and DLCD to create a toolkit to assist local governments on how we go about strategizing and executing actions to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, again, from vehicles 10,000 pounds and less. It directs the DLCD, honor before June 1st, 2011, in consultation with OTC, to adopt targets for each MPO, taking into consideration the population growth expectations of those MPOs. So each of the six MPOs will have a different target developed by DLCD in consultation with OTC. It directs ODOT and DLCD to report back to the legislature in 2011 on how we're all going to pay for this, and what that financing is going to look like, and a report regarding the progress. Now what it directs MPOs to do is to consider two things, and that's in Section 7 of the bill, and that is to consider whether or not we can take immediate action without having to wait for the toolkit and the strategies to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and how regional transportation plans can be altered to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So these are the mandates that came out of Senate Bill 1059. As with all pieces of legislation, fiscal and revenue impact are done. The fiscal impact for this particular bill came out at $2 million. And what ODOT said was that they would use existing funding to fund the $2 million, and $1.4 million is going to come out of the STIP funding, which as we all know, is used for transit, planning, that sort of thing. They're going to take out part of the public outreach money from their general fund, because the Oregon Constitution restricts highway funds from being used for that thing, and the rest of it's going to come out of their ordinary budget. So the $2 million that's required to implement Senate Bill 1059 is actually coming out of a bucket of money that we rely on for other things. So one of the messages that we have been sending, especially for the funding for 2001, is that it be new money. So the letter that you received, because House Bill 2001 says that we're, we can't do this without the funding, the MPC sent a letter last week, is it last, yes, last week, it's Monday, isn't it, requesting the assistance of the Chair of the OTC and LCDC to assist us in finding the funding that would allow us to comply with House Bill 2001. So far, they have not identified where that funding will come from, nor have they determined how much it's going to cost for us to comply with House Bill 2001. And so, I've also provided you with a timeline of what we can expect. Under House Bill 2186 is the first block on the left-hand side, both of those have been done, so the task force met four times from July, December, 2009, and then they reported back to the legislature, and Senate Bill 1059 was adopted. ODOT will, right now is beginning its schedule and trying to figure out how they will do public outreach to determine what the statewide strategy should be, as well as how to educate people on the needs for reducing and addressing greenhouse gas emissions, and will develop some sort of schedule for public outreach. Meanwhile, rules will be adopted, Metro is in the process, under their requirements under House Bill 2001, they are developing a toolkit, which I do believe that ODOT will use to implement statewide, and be reporting back to the legislature. Meanwhile, before July 1st, 2013, under House Bill 2001, we are required to develop our modeling scenarios and report back to the legislature as to the progress and the alternatives and the implications of those, and we're to report back to the legislature during the 2014 legislative session. So, that's the update. And Counselor Zelenka sat on the greenhouse gas task force, and I'm sure he has some...
God, that was about as comprehensive as reports I could get, so all you kids watching at home who want to know how to do a summary report, that was it. So I don't really have anything to add.
Only thing that I would add to that is that the MPC has been mindful of what we're trying to do, and trying to build language into all the work plans and everything that we've been doing to indicate that we understand that this is what needs to be part of everything, so been sort of diligently trying to be sure that we embed the work that we have to do in the plans that we are putting before ourselves and sending back out again. So, did you have any...
Which is what this exceptionally well-crafted letter...
Mm-hmm. He likes his letter.
Yeah, probably so, yeah, I was gathering that.
So, I have Mike and Jennifer in the queue. Mike?
I'm not sure exactly how to formulate this question, but I'm gonna try. Andrea and I both get to serve on ODOT's Steering Committee for the Beltline Plan, okay? One of the issues that comes up during that conversation is alternate modes and what percentage, based on the different modeling, of what fixing beltline between Coburg and River Road might look like, and how much it might cost. Part of those scenarios talk about the alternative modes and tie in the issue of their goals around, about how GHG levels, sorry, are driven by VMT, and so, vehicle miles traveled, for those watching this.
And greenhouse gas.
Yeah, exactly, get all the acronyms. So, for me, there's not a direct link, for example, between, when you're talking about a planning horizon of 2035 necessarily, that how many miles a car drives today equates to a certain amount of gases that are put out by a car that will travel in 2035. There's, you know, really no way of us knowing that Mark Fronmeyer isn't gonna succeed wildly, and we're all gonna be driving electric cars five years from now, and then the issue of vehicle miles traveled won't be a good measure of greenhouse gas thresholds here. So my question is, is that with this July 1 deadline that you're mentioning, in 2013, do we get to have input on the question of that modeling of how GHG relates to VMT? Because I know that ODOT had said that's something they're gonna be doing, is coming up with those standards as a part of this work. Will we get local input on that?
Mayor Piercy, Counselor Clark, absolutely. They're coming up with a statewide strategy on how to deal with that, and part of the discussion is, you know, what's the measurement, what needs to be reduced? And they need to determine that for each MPO area, because they're going to come up with a specific target that needs to be met. How that target's met within an MPO would be up to the MPO. It's going to be different for us here in the Springfield Eugene area than it will be for, like, the Bend MPO area. And whether or not you and Counselor Ortiz will get to weigh in that, being on the Steering Committee, I don't know, but it's really going to be a statewide public outreach on how to develop the strategy for the state. And those issues have been coming up, you know, what, what do we do as far as vehicle miles traveled, congestion pricing, the reduction on the reliance of gasoline and electric cars, and, you know, are they powered by coal? And it's, so all of that has to be taken into consideration when ODOT develops a statewide strategy, which we will all get to weigh in on.
To use one of Counselor Zelenka's favorite words, "The nexus between VMT and GHG isn't clear for me," so I'm hoping that maybe that study develops more of a clear nexus, or at least gives us some kind of modeling that allows us to figure that one out. But my real question here is, we're scheduled to do this in 2013, or maybe 2014, by the time it comes back to us, and we're gonna get to this, to decisions about the beltline fix long before then, and one of the things that was discussed at those ODOT meetings about beltline was, we're gonna have some clarity on that standard before we move forward, so I'm, I'm not exactly sure on the, on how this, will it be the states' work then that will be available for ODOT to use in that particular case?
Mayor Piercy, Counselor Clark, there are two... Mayor Piercy, Counselor Clark, there are two processes that are going on at the same time. There's our process, the MPO, our Central Lane MPO process that's required under House Bill 2001, which we have some deadlines to meet, one of which is in 2013. It will take us a long time to come up with the alternatives that we have to present to the legislature in 2014. First, we have to find the funding. And then the process that ODOT and DLCD are undergoing under Senate Bill 1059, out of the recommendations of the greenhouse gas task force, as provided and directed under House Bill 2186. So there are two processes basically going on, a statewide process where ODOT and DLCD, and Metro for the most part, who's going to get there before all the rest of us in developing this toolkit, and some other guidelines that we can all use. That'll be going on at the same time that we need to figure out what our alternatives are in scenarios, and what those impediments are, and how we will go about implementing them. That's what we have to come up with. We don't actually have to do it by then. We just have to come up with how we think we'll do it, and some alternatives, by the way that we all agree upon.
Okay.
Does that answer your question, Counselor Clark?
Kind of. It sounds like the statewide process and the metro work is probably going to inform what we decide with ODOT's Beltline Project, more than anything that we'll do locally by the time we get there.
Mayor Piercy, Counselor Clark, we hope so, because that will then cost a lot less.
Okay. Thank you.
I would only add to that, that prior to this legislation, we still had goals set by ODOT of VMT reductions. So it doesn't just start now. We already have things that we have to be responding to. We're just, we're adding to that.
You're exactly right, Mayor Piercy. And we're also doing some other things, especially with the goal of making all city-owned facilities and city operations carbon neutral by 2035, which is, and I was just given this information today. So the internal action plan is now with the execs for their review and comment, and then the community climate action plan is already through the public engagement phase, and a draft plan will go to council shortly. So we're, this will all sort of tie in together.
We have many plans heading down, kind of in the same direction. Jennifer, you're next.
Well, I think you two just spoke to my question, because my question is, how is this different from the Transplan Directive to reduce VMTs? And is this, does this undercut, it sounds like we're just layering plans upon plans, and that's really inefficient, and I think down the road, if we don't, it'll be, they'll be used as hammers over our head for not doing something if we didn't do this plan, implement this plan before we added this plan. It just, so, yeah, how is, how is this different from the Transplan Directive to reduce VMTs?
Mayor Piercy, Counselor Solomon, it's an additional mandate on us. However, one of the things that we made sure was in House Bill 2001, is the governance issue and the local control. So we get to decide how we, what the alternatives are and the scenarios are, and we get to decide how those are implemented and what the impediments are, and we report back to the legislature what those plans are. We don't actually have to do anything. Meanwhile, we're waiting for a statewide strategy and a toolkit on how we go about reducing or meeting the targets that are set in our MPO for reducing greenhouse gas emissions, which could include the planning that we've, and the actions that we've already taken. So we are probably a step ahead of many communities, and I know we're a step ahead of a couple of MPOs already that have no such plan.
Wow, it just seems like an awful lot of make-work for, and I guess my other question was, why don't they just spend all this money and effort on transit? We all agree that transit helps reduce, gets people out of their cars and onto buses or MX or high-speed rail. So why, and they're all underfunded, so why don't we, instead of doing this, why won't they just give them a needed transit?
Mayor Piercy, Counselor Solomon, I guess I have my own personal opinions about why that might be the case. This action was one group's effort to address a particular situation that they thought needed to be addressed. Transit isn't their main thing. This, they thought, what we needed to accomplish statewide was this. And I'm sure there are other groups out there that believe that, you know, we could really address a lot of these if we just funded more transit. Those groups were not pushing this.
Huh. That answers a lot of questions. Okay, thank you.
Chris?
Thank you. This is really kind of playing off of what Jennifer and some of the others talked about, is, yeah, Transplan dealt with a lot of these issues more than 20 years ago, but it's kind of like, it's not bringing back the old style, it's doing it in a different way. I remember working on Transplan, and Transplan was working towards a land use outcome and then using demand management and infrastructure to kind of get to this, I'll call it a play in the barn, it was this idea they were going to do. This is, I think, trying to do it a little different way, not really trying to work towards that land use outcome, but to try to do something more rational in terms of short, medium, and longer term. Which brings me to the notion that part of what Transplan talked about was the notion that you can do part of it with demand management, which is, I think, the cheap solution that a lot of people go to, because you don't have to build anything to do demand management, but it also gets you a lot of the resistance. And then infrastructure. And the infrastructure piece, for me, was this greenhouse gas discussion 20 years ago, which is if, if you get backed up on a road because traffic's not moving, and it takes you 20 minutes to get somewhere that normally should take you five minutes, that's 15 minutes' worth of emissions. That's always been the trade-off. I mean, this is nothing new. We're not inventing any new ideas here. We're just trying to come at it from perhaps a more effective way. But I think we really need to talk in terms of, there is an infrastructure cost here. There absolutely has to be an infrastructure cost here. You can't just do it with demand management or planning or some other piece of, piece of the process. That is part of it, but it can't be the only piece. We've really got to recognize there's an infrastructure component, because if my road's backed up, parking fees are not going to change that, or something that's demand management-oriented. So I think as this goes forward, we really have to recognize there will be a dollar cost. There has to be a dollar cost. You can't make this, you can't reduce greenhouse gases without a dollar cost, without recognizing there's an infrastructure impact. That's, I don't think, what Transplan was really able to get their head around, because it was, it was an enormous thing at that time, and it's an enormous thing still. But that's what we've got to acknowledge, that the only way we'll fix this is with a, coming at it from a number of different directions.
Alan?
So there was an effort to increase transit dollars, not directly related to this, but a different effort at a different time during the legislature, and it got shot down pretty dramatically in the legislature. So transit didn't get a whole lot of funding last go-around, and that was unrelated to this. Second is that the 2013 July deadline, we have to come up with two scenarios and pick one that we're going to look at and model them. We're going, and, and, so we have to narrow it down to one scenario. Metro has to go the next step forward, which is to actually implement that scenario. We're not required to do that. And we only have to do this work if we get funding from the legislature. So it's, it's not an unfunded mandate, it's a funded mandate. It only becomes, we only have to do it if we get the money from them. So to do all that, when we were going through the greenhouse gas task force, we realized that the upfront stuff that needed to occur in order for us to get there was that we needed to have the state set goals, the state and ODOT and DLCD come up with the goals, and also the tools, and also the dollars to be able to do that. So that was what 1059 was really about. And when we get into the modeling, what we're going to be looking at is the baseline stuff, using Metro's, Metro's plan. And what Transplan did was just look at VMT reductions. What we're doing is adding to that, which is also not only VMT reductions, but also greenhouse gas reductions, to meet the state goals. And so it's a supplemental activity within there, but they'll be very intricately linked together. What we now have is kind of a land use model and a transportation model, and they don't kind of link together, and they don't deal with greenhouse gases. That's the model pieces that need to be built in the short term, which is what Metro's doing right now, and we'll be able to use those. When we get into the specifics about what you were asking, Mike, about VMTs, direct correlation to greenhouse gas reductions, the model will create a baseline about what we think is going to happen with vehicles. And then the toolkit is things that we can do that will reduce greenhouse gases and VMT. So the toolkit will be able to be a plug-in to this model that says, if you do X, you will reduce greenhouse gases by Y. And then you can choose how much of that you want to do in order to build up a package of activities within your plan or scenario to meet the goal for both VMTs and for greenhouse gases. So that toolkit becomes very, very important. Unfortunately, it's not going to be able to be in place by the time the River Road staff gets on board. So they'll be working around that. Some of it's in place now, but not all of it. So it won't be all put together by the time that all gets going together. So that hopefully does a little bit of context about how this all gets pulled together. Our particular part is that we have to do that scenario planning, and we have to get funding. So that's what this letter to the chairs is about. We'll, we'll work with you guys to create a strategy to get money to help us do this.
Mike?
Yeah, I would just, I guess, urge our legislators that may have a chance to hear our discussion here, that from my personal perspective, I certainly would hate to see them take out STIP funding or monies that they might otherwise allocate to capacity and maintenance opportunities for our woefully under-well-maintained transportation system in order to do this. I would hope that they take the advice of this good letter and look for additional or new monies to be able to do that.
It's actually the planning money as opposed to the infrastructure money.
Sure, sure.
Both.
Thanks, Alan. I appreciate all your education.
Jennifer?
Well, Alan, you spoke to the fact that this new plan would incorporate many of the Transplan elements, like the VMTs. They would be closely linked. But in the end, will it require a Transplan amendment if we've got this new plan?
I think it's actually going to end up being one plan. I don't think we're going to be doing two.
So it will absorb Transplan?
This will be part of Transplan.
Brenda, did you have something you wanted to answer?
Well, yeah, I just wanted to know that we get to decide that on our own, depending on how we want to meet the goals. Every MPO in the state will meet their target a different way.
Right.
Okay. And then, speaking of meeting the targets, what do we get for meeting our target?
A gold star.
A cookie.
We get to save ourselves.
Slap on the back, hardy. Job well done.
Geez, you guys, kind of shoot for more. And then regarding the funding timeline, you said we don't have to do this unless we get the funding. Well, does this July 1, 2013, assume funding immediately? I mean, if we don't get funding till 2012, does that push this off the same amount of time, I guess, to 2015?
Mayor Piercy, Counselor Solomon, no, it does not. It assumes funding early on in the process. However, if we get to the point where it's, oh, the middle of 2012, and we still have not received funding, and that's certainly a discussion that we'll have with the legislature.
About making sure to push off our 2013 deadline?
Or rolling in that requirement with the directives under our Senate Bill 1059.
And that was?
That was the direction of, to ODOT and DLCD to develop the toolkit, which they'll use Metro's model, and come up with a statewide strategy and develop targets. Instead of us doing the two processes, we'll have a discussion if we don't get money in time that we can complete the process and comply with House Bill 2001. I would recommend we have a discussion with the legislature about whether or not to roll those two processes together.
Okay. Thank you. So I would say that we're going to be having, we'll see where we are, and we'll be having a discussion with the legislature in the next legislative session, and it's coming right up. I mean, that's, that's right, right there in front of us.
Absolutely.
And I guess the only other point I would make is that I think it's true, this comes to us via a mandate, but the mandate is what is, for the most part, in line with what we said we want to do anyway, and we've been told from the beginning that they're going to find money for us to be able to do this. So I think they, we just don't want them to find it in the wrong places, and so that's the, that's the issue. But I don't think that this is doing something that we haven't already said, and our MPC hasn't already said that we want to be doing anyway. So Alan, did you have something to add to that?
Yeah, two points. When all of the MPOs that were at the, at the greenhouse gas task force, from, from Bend to Medford to Salem to, I'm missing one.
Corvallis.
Corvallis and Eugene, we all said that this was very important work and that we wanted to do it. The problem was, we didn't have the tools, we didn't have the funding. And so that's what the greenhouse gas task force worked on, was to create that framework and how to get this accomplished. The second part is to clarify about, I think that the way this is going to work is that this is, the greenhouse gas module is going to be attached to the existing models that we do for Transplan and whatnot, and will be part of that process, as opposed to creating a whole nother plan. It'll be, it'll be so integrated into it that it won't be able to actually be pulled apart. It'll just be another metric that will be in the plan and able to move forward and create.
And we're in the process of needing to update our Transplan.
Which we're starting.
Anyway, we're starting. So all of these things are going to kind of get folded into each other as we move along. So that's the...
And at MPC, there's been several that have been harping on, why are we doing all these plans all over the place? Why don't we do one plan and move forward on that? Include the federal one and the state one at the same time, which LCDC finally said, yeah, these things are ODOT, they need to be on the same timeframe. So my hope is that we'll eventually get to where we just have one plan that deals with all of this stuff, and it meets our federal requirements, our state requirements, our greenhouse gas requirements, and our VMT requirements.
Chris, and then we're going to wrap this.
Yeah, just very quickly, I guess my only hope is that in this process, we don't try to come up with a magic bullet solution, because I think part of what happened with Transplan was, they started going down the magic bullet route. I think nodal development was a magic bullet. And I think this is more complicated than something you can solve with a magic bullet, and we really have to be comprehensive in how we approach this, and we ought to be thoughtful. And there, there won't be a magic bullet. We have to just plug a way to get it fixed.
The magic buckshot.
Magic buckshot, yeah.
And we'll learn as we go, too.
Yeah.
All right, we're going to wrap this first works, and the next one kind of just, it's right on in, and so the, the next one's on the...
I am.
Area Commission on Transportation Act. Act 1 of the Act.
Act, yes. Mm-hmm. And again, I have some additional documents to provide to you that will help engage you in the discussion. And I have a guest speaker. So first of all, I have sort of a map so that you can see the, oh, give you a colored one.
Yeah, we want the colored.
And this document that Rob Zaco was nice enough to prepare. It compares Acts to MPOs, because there is some question about that. And then this document, which Counselor Zelenka requested today, that a list of the names of the people that sit on the fact LC, which I will explain what that is here shortly. So, all right, different topic. Area Commission on Transportation's 101. Like I said, I have a guest speaker. So I'm just going to talk very briefly about what Acts are, very generally, and how we got to the point where we are actually in the process of formulating an area transportation, or area commission on transportation, or an act. I'm going to refer to it as an act. And then I'll have Mr. Zaco come up and explain the process for the formation of the act, where that process is, and what some of the very, very next steps are this week, hopefully. So, area commissions on transportation, or Acts, are basically advisory bodies that are chaired by the OTC, and they provide advice and recommendations on different transportation issues that impact the state system, and some regional and local issues that also impact the state system. They, they focus primarily on the state's system, but where local issues, transportation issues, impact the state system, they also give advice and recommendations on those. They also provide a conduit and... They also provide a conduit and the ability for process and stakeholders to engage and communicate, not only amongst themselves, but with the Oregon Department of Transportation and the OTC on regional and local transportation priorities. Primary roles of the acts would include, again, providing a public forum and public process to transportation issues, making recommendations to the OTC primarily on the statewide transportation improvement funds, or STIP funds, and Connect Oregon funds. We hope to have a Connect Oregon four. We're right in the middle of Connect Oregon three right now. And communicating and coordinating regional transportation priorities with other organizations, including state agencies, the OTC, and other regional organizations like the MPO and the MPC. So how did we get here? Well, in 2009, actually in 2007 and 2005, bills were introduced to require that Lane County create an act. As you can see from the map that I provided to you, Lane County and the metro area are the only two areas in the state that do not have acts. And one of the reasons for this is if you look at the map, you can see that all the other acts combined at least two or more counties. And so for reasons that I don't have to explain to you, having an act where you have a number of government entities, especially two or more counties, was probably a good idea. We did not form an act because our county's very large and the Board of Commissioners has taken over the role of providing the services and the advice of what an act would traditionally provide. In 2007, we took a support position on the bill that would have created an act in Lane County. That bill did not go anywhere, even though it received a hearing. Senator Prozansky and Representative Holvey continued to push that, and in 2001 introduced Senate Bill 944. During the legislative session in 2009, we took a monitor position on that bill because we knew that the Board of Commissioners in Lane County was opposed to the bill, and we didn't see the need to step in. We had heard that the bill had a pretty good chance of passing, and in fact, it did. As a matter of fact, it passed 28 to 2 in the Senate and 48 to 3 in the House, with those five legislators who voted no, not giving any explanation, and none of them being from Lane County. So who knows? Senate Bill 944 requires mandates that Lane County, in consultation with the elected officials and with transportation stakeholders in Lane County, develop a proposed charter for creation of an act by September 30 of this year. Once that bill passed, Lane County had to undergo how it would come about with the charter. The bill also mandated that there be certain criteria that the Lane County act would use in prioritizing project selection, a statement of expectations on feedback, a description of some sort of conflict resolution process, a plan for regular and consistent communication and coordination among adjacent area acts and commissions and the MPOs, and a plan for public involvement. In order to facilitate the provisions of Senate Bill 944, Lane County hired Mr. Rob Zaco as a consultant to take Lane County through the process of formulating the bylaws and the charter for the act. And they decided that they would come up with a three-stage process in order to form the act. They would identify the stakeholders, they would create a task force, and then they would create the act for approval by the BCC, well, for recommendation to the OTC. So, Rob? Rob is here to explain the process for the formulation of the task force that was brought together to come up with the draft bylaws that will be presented to the Board of Commissioners, as well as who was chosen and how to be on that task force and where we are today in that process.
Thank you, Brenda. Thank you, Mayor Piercy. Thank you, councilors. I'm really here just to help you and answer your questions. I'll make a few remarks, but want to leave a lot of time to answer your questions. Let me start briefly with a fable to help you understand why we might want to have an act here in Lane County. Of course, here in Lane County, we've got our act together, and so it's really not an issue. But there's a small community on the coast called Seaside, and Highway 101 runs through Seaside, and there have been traffic problems there. And ODOT wanted to, I'm not sure if it's billed to bypass or widen it, but do some sort of improvements to address those issues. And they were farther along than typically in the case and had designs and had the money and were about to do that. And the people Seaside took a vote and said, well, you're going to destroy downtown if you do this. And ODOT said, what you don't appreciate generosity, that's fine. We'll take the money away, and we'll put it in the I-5 Beltline project where people appreciate our money. And I'm not sure about the details of this. This is a fable. But the point is, is that sometimes you have decision-making processes where you think you've made a decision about what you want to do, and then the real world doesn't quite work out that way. There hasn't been enough communication coordination. The idea of an act, or the theory of an act, is that we can coordinate better so that everybody who has an interest in these transportation projects is talking about earlier, so we don't get to a point where ODOT's wasting money and doing a bunch of planning for a community that doesn't want it. It's not that the process that we have for making decisions isn't valid, it's that we want to do it in a more effective way so that we're looking ahead, making sure that everybody's on board, and we're using a limited taxpayer dollars in an effective way. And of course, we're doing that here in Lane County, but we want to do a little bit better than we are already. So in a nutshell, I think that's why it makes sense to have an act. In terms of the process through which we're going through this, and I'm going to try to be non-technical here, I know you just went through this whole transplan, GHD, a lot of acronyms. We're really talking here just about people and how people can work together. What we did was realize that we're going to have a bunch of people in a new body who are going to work together. And rather than have the county commissioners figure out what's best for them and impose a charter or bylaws on that, we said, why don't we try to make our best guess of who's going to be part of this act, bring them all together, and then have them figure out what rules they want to work under. So this FACT LC, this forum on an act for Lane County, is informally a preact. We did a pretty good job, we think, of bringing together all the people who are going to be on the act, and then said, okay, we've brought you together. Who do you think should be on the act? And what do you think your rules should be? And so they've been meeting for three months now, January, February, and March. And we didn't get it quite right. They've made some adjustments to the membership. They've worked out how they want to make decisions. They've worked out whether they want to have a chair and various sorts of committees and all that kind of stuff you do when you've got a bylaws of some new organization. And in the process, by bringing together the people who are going to be part of an act, they've sort of been practicing being an act. Rather than this being a theoretical discussion, they've been meeting monthly, just like the act will. They've been having disagreements, and they've been having to work through that. Because what the county commissioners said is, we would really like you all to come to consensus on what you think should be best for Lane County. And if you do, the implicit promise is, that will be good for us. If you can't agree, then we, the county commissioners, are going to have to figure out what to do. But it'd really be great if you could figure it out amongst yourselves. And Mayor Piercy, I think you can confirm this, there was a lot of tension initially. Certainly, the January meeting, the February meeting, and a lot of apprehension about who would be making decisions, who was a member. We worked through some of that in March and came to a tentative agreement about the membership. We had a subcommittee meeting a little bit later in March and hammered out a lot of other things. And as far as we can tell, going into our final meeting this Wednesday, we're on track for everybody to agree, or at least be comfortable with, except the bylaws that are part of your packet. So in a nutshell, that's the process, and I don't really have anything else to say other than answer your questions.
I'll just add to that, that appreciate Rob's facilitation of this process. He's accurate. At the first couple of meetings, I would use the word gingerly was how people approached each other around the table. There was a lot of concern on the part of some of our smaller communities about whether their voices would truly be heard, or was somebody trying to make sure that they wouldn't or something? And so it took a lot of just spending time around the table together. I think we've all had that experience where that's generally what does it. You get to know each other, you get all the issues out on the table, you wrestle with them for a while, and then you find out you really have a lot more agreement around the table than you thought, than you thought you had when you first came. And so that's how it's worked. And this last meeting was really a real breakthrough meeting, I think. And everybody, I want to particularly call out the mayor of Crestwell for some really good leadership in that meeting of being a willing and cooperative voice for the smaller communities. And so I think it's working very well now, and people seem ready to find a way to get to agreement. So it's taken a lot of work.
So just two things. What will happen then, when the forum or the FACT LC determines and agrees that the bylaws and the charters that they've drafted up are good to go, so to speak, they will recommend those to the Board of Commissioners, who then must present them to the OTC by October 31st?
They need to be presented by September 30th or submitted, and then heard by October 30th.
Yes, for final approval. The OTC can thumbs up or thumbs down, but that thumbs down cannot be based on membership alone. So the Board of Commissioners would like to take bylaws and charter to the OTC that have unanimous, if not widespread, approval by all of the participants in the county. So I've provided you in your packets as well with the proposed membership structure of the Lane Act. And I broke it down in such a way so that you could see what the proposed membership of 27 voting members and the ex-official members are, and compare those to the other acts. I know that Mayor Piercy forwarded you a letter from 1,000 friends with two concerns over the draft proposal. The first being the setup of the voting members, and the second being who gets to make the final decision as to the, what are you calling it?
Citizen private sector member members.
And they are recommending two changes in the draft bylaws. The first being that membership be proportional to population, and that the Board of Commissioners gets the final say on the membership, the private membership or the stakeholder memberships.
But I will just add to that by saying, in a communication I got like this today, I think, from Commissioner Handy, he, like I, and I think that everyone around the table feels like the goal should be getting to consensus. We're just short of it. It shouldn't be who wins or who loses. That's a bad way to go about trying to move forward together, and it just takes you right back where you came from. So there is a high desire on the part of all of us for there to be a very high level of agreement around the table. So that's kind of where we, all of us sort of left the conversation at that point.
Part of the dynamic here is that we recognize, we in Lane County, that there are limited tax per dollars, public dollars for transportation projects. And we're, in a very real sense, competing with other areas of the state. And if we can't get our act together and agree on what we want, there are other parts of the state that are happy to take those dollars that we would otherwise have. So we only hurt ourselves if we sort of agree but have disagreements over what we want to do. So we're really, the people around the table are really committed to saying, let's work together, let's figure out what we agree on, what we want funded, go to state, and then make those things happen.
Good. All right. I've got Mike and Jennifer in the queue. Mike?
Thank you. Some of my questions were answered there by Brenda's comments towards the end, but so I'm assuming that no matter what the committee comes up with, the county commissioners are going to have the final say on the recommendation, though, yes?
Mayor Piercy, Counselor Clark, the OTC has the final say.
On, I asked on the recommendation, not the final say on what actually gets formed, right? Recommendation will come from the county commissioners, right?
That's correct.
Okay. We're not voting on any of this today, but by the time it gets through its final work, before the county commission recommends to OTC, will this council have an opportunity to vote on it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, cool. Excellent. And then lastly, you mentioned, and I haven't read it in depth, I'm sorry to say, but did peruse what was in our packet on this. But you made a kind of cursory comment about it including conflict resolution amongst local jurisdictions. Now, I know I asked LCDC to help us with that with regard to some sort of mechanism for land use issues. Could you elaborate on what's been discussed there so far and how we might see something come out of that?
Do you want me to take this? Let me answer, Mayor Piercy, Counselor Clark, your specific question, but as Brenda indicated, there are actually four specific things that the legislature called out in Senate Bill 944. They're looking for public involvement plan, a conflict resolution plan, and help me with the two others.
Some sort of expectation of feedback, what they expected.
And some sort of criteria whereby projects are prioritized. And to be quite candid, the legislature was looking for the act to be up and running in timely fashion, didn't provide resources to make this happen, and set expectations on what to do. We're doing the best we can with limited resources. What we're aiming to do right now is to get the act up and running, probably not, probably meet the spirit of what the legislature's looking for, if not the letter. We're not going to have a public involvement plan. You don't have one before you this month or next month. That will be on the work plan for the act to develop, similarly, to sort of flesh out how it makes decisions. In terms of conflict resolution, I'm not sure how close we're coming to that. What's proposed in the bylaws right now is a two-level decision-making process. The primary way of making decisions, ideal, is to make decisions by consensus, and certainly if everybody agrees, you don't have a conflict, that's a good thing. But it's recognized that for various reasons, that may not be possible always. You may not have time to discuss things. You may have somebody who's sort of an outlier, who just is unreasonable, or there may be honest differences of opinion. The backup plan is to have some sort of majority or supermajority way of resolving differences, and that's going to be a topic of discussion, I'm sure, this Wednesday. That's still being worked out. Whether that counts as a conflict resolution process, or if the legislature's looking for more beyond that, I'm not quite sure.
Okay. And so your estimation is that it will be presented to OTC, short of absolute clarity, then?
We've been trying very hard to keep everybody abreast of what's going on. And by everybody, I mean the entire Lane County Legislative Delegation, leadership of the Oregon Transportation Commission, our neighboring acts. Everybody's been being kept up to date on this. And the legislature in particular has had several opportunities to say, wait, hold up, this is not what we're looking for. I've been providing them with reports and saying, here's where we're headed. If this isn't what you're looking for, please let us know sooner than later. You're welcome to come to meeting on Wednesday. You're welcome to review the bylaws. You know, if you have some advice or concerns, please share that with us. So we've been communicating with them. And I don't know what more we can do.
And I'll just add.
I guess, well, I was just going to say, I guess I would charge our representative, from my personal perspective, that the opportunity to resolve conflicts quickly can sometimes be an important part of the process that may be, you know, outlined and explicit in terms of how, as it is often in someone's interest to slow things down, rather than get things killed. And I would just urge you to give thought to that in the process of the discussion.
So what I'm going to say is, whether it is the commissioners or the small communities, they all don't want to aim at that kind of thing. They all want to aim at trying to keep working at it till you get to agreement. And my sense is that if you try to put them into something where it's going to be a thumbs up, thumbs down, 51% or whatever, people are going to fall off of this agreement. I mean, they really are all in agreement. They want to keep working on things until they can get there or really close to there. I'd also say that ODOT is totally on board with the way we've been working on this and are in agreement with the way we're setting it up, at least to this point. So it is, there's no, there's none of that expression of a need to do that, I would say.
Well, I guess I'm just wanting to give voice to my concern that there are oftentimes these situations. For example, Springfield's been working on a wastewater and stormwater plan that's now through its eighth reading, I think, at the county level. And sometimes, an inability to operate with agreement at multiple jurisdictions is a way to accomplish an end, and I would hate to see that built into this process.
Shannon, agree?
If I may, Mayor Piercy?
Oh, yes.
And we don't need to go into the differences between the acts and MPOs, but the key difference is that an act is an advisory body. And whereas if you have a decision-making body, you can sometimes make a decision by not making a decision. The advisory body, if you don't make a decision, then the people who really are
make a decision, then the people who really are are just going to ignore you. And so it's in everybody's interest as part of the act to make some decision. And you've got that dynamic that's sort of guiding people, saying, you know, come together, agree, just to point that out, I guess compared to some other things you may be used to.
And if you look at this comparison, they don't even have the same, there is a sheet here that has a difference between Acts and MPOs.
Sure.
And what their responsibilities are and what they have to sign off on and things of that sort.
I would suggest that still the opportunity not to come to agreement on a recommendation is itself a recommendation.
Jennifer?
I had two questions, Brenda, about the membership structure. What is, it's saying here, one representative from the Highway 126 East corridor?
Yes.
Can you tell me more about that group?
Yeah, Mayor Piercy.
As opposed to the problems I know that exist on Highway 126 West, or what about Highway 58?
Mayor Piercy, Councilor Solomon, the purpose of that, it was discussed at the fact LC, that because this is an unincorporated area, that they wouldn't have a natural representative like a city on here, where we would be addressing perhaps maybe with the city of Vinia, 126 West, whereas 126 East wouldn't have a natural representative on here. And so the fact LC determined that this would be their representative, and it, correct me if I'm wrong, this representative would be appointed by the Board of Commissioners, that was what was discussed.
So like a Vina, Lieberg, Mackenzie Bridge kind of person?
But none of those are incorporated cities, and so otherwise they wouldn't be members of the act. And so I think there's general agreement that that's a gap in where we have incorporated cities in LANE County, and wanted to address that.
Okay. And then it doesn't appear that there's any rail representation on this list, is that a purposeful omission, or is that not part of the act?
Mayor Piercy, Councilor Solomon, there are different, the 27 members, up to 27 members, include different members that could have interests in rail, however, in the discussion by the fact LC, they didn't want to limit themselves to specific target areas or issue areas for the ex officio members, because whereas in one period of time rail might be the important thing, at another period of time it might be bikes and ped, and they wanted to give themselves the flexibility to get whoever they needed to at the table. And so they wanted to leave this flexible.
If I could add, and I'll indicate, the OTC wants Acts to be, to have a majority of members who are elected officials who represent people, and there's no rail government here, you can't draw from the rail mayor or the rail president. But Acts, unlike some other decision-making bodies or advisory bodies, can have non-elected people, stakeholders, and the six citizen representatives in there, it's not spelled out in the summary, are intended to be drawn from different modes, air, rail, transit, truck freight, and so forth, bicycle and pedestrian, as well as other interests that are affected by the transportation system, public health, public safety, schools, and so forth. It's left up to the act to decide amongst people that apply or recruited, who would best sort of
Fill the gap.
Fill the gaps there.
Okay, thank you.
George Brown?
But rail is specifically spelled out in the more detailed bylaws as being one of those interest areas.
Okay, thanks. George Brown?
Okay, a lot of my questions have been, were answered the last couple of rounds, people had. I think I have a really fundamental one, though, it's like, why is this going to be an improvement over the way things are, that we're doing it now? If they don't have any for act, we'll make a recommendation to OTC, but they have no legal funding or regulatory authority. I'm just wondering why we see this as an improvement over?
Currently, the county commissioners have no legal regulatory funding authority over state highway decisions. In this role, they're an advisory body to the OTC. So we're not changing the fact that it's the OTC that makes these decisions, and they're the ones that have the authority. What we're trying to do here is to have a broader discussion to get more input, and certainly I would say that some of the small cities, Florence, Oak Ridge, Faraway, have not felt as included in the discussions by the county commissioners, so I'd like to, and some different interest groups, bicyclists and truckers have also not felt included. And so the act is, is not really sort of a totally different way of doing things, it's a broad way of continuing to do things the way we are, to take the fact that the counties are involved, to add to that, so there are other voices involved in discussion.
As I can see, I mean, it's certainly a big increase in the number of stakeholders, that's for sure.
If I could add something to that, in the real world, too, our Board of Commissioners in LANE County have been competing with the other Acts that exist in the state for limited state funding, STIP funding, and Connect Oregon funding, and when the super Acts sort of get together, especially with Connect Oregon funding, they can come to the table and say, we as an act, and in some cases, two, three counties have all agreed that this is our highest priority, and we can't say that because we don't have an act. And so in that one instance, especially where we're competing against other Acts in the state for limited state funding, we can say, you know, our act has decided, and look who we have as membership, and we had these broad discussions, and we decided this was a regional priority, and we should be able to compete with these other Acts. So in that situation, it's an improvement.
Could be an advantage, surely, yeah, I get that. Okay, well, then my last question, but I think it's answered right here in front of me, this is all funded by ODOT. ODOT funds the new.
Currently
I mean, we're going to have 27 people, that's going to involve staff time and some kind of expense, I assume, it's not going to be free.
The current process is actually being funded by the county, as I said, the legislature didn't provide any funding to do this, they, ODOT's providing staff support, but the act itself, once it's up and running, I think it's $90,000 per biennium for staff support, either by ODOT staff or most likely it's going to be a combination of ODOT and Elcock providing staff support.
I see, okay, thank you.
Betty?
Well, my main question has been asked, why is there no one representing rail? And I still think there, we have somebody representing tran, lane transit, so that's somebody representing the buses, and it seems that there should be somebody who has been actively pursuing rail as a method of transportation. And I saw it as a big lack immediately. And then the citizen-at-large members are appointed by the other people, that means after they've been chosen, then they appoint six more, is that right?
Mayor Piercy, Councilor Taylor, that hasn't been decided yet, right now, the way that it's set up, these up to six citizens-at-large members, which comes from, can be drawn from a group of interests, as Mr. Zechel pointed out, that include rail, environmental groups, bike and ped, truckers, seniors, citizens, just a wide variety. And right now, the way the bylaws are written, is that the act gets to choose these, it has been suggested that the Board of Commissioners gets to choose them, but what they'll do, as Mr. Zechel pointed out earlier, because Acts are typically made up, the voting members are typically elected officials, and there isn't a rail elected official, it could be, let's just say, for instance, on the lane transit district official that's appointed to the act is Greg Evans, who has a very big interest in rail. And he, the act then feels that that rail position or interest is then represented on the act. And so maybe they don't need a rail person right now, but maybe Mr. Evans, in a couple of years, isn't on the lane transit district, and he's not on the act, and then they find that there's a rail hole, and the act gets to decide that they want to appoint someone onto the act as a voting member that represents that particular interest. But that's up to the act in the way that the bylaws are currently written.
Well, I'm concerned about leaving that up to them, and I'm also concerned, you said elected officials, lane transit district are not elected.
Or the board?
Yes, elected or appointed, yes.
In the way the OTC thinks about Acts, the term elect is a bit of a term of art, is that county commissioners, mayors, city councils are elected, but for these purposes, the officials of tribes, ports, and transit districts are considered to be elected officials, even if they're in fact appointed.
That's playing around with the language a little too much for me, but never mind. Then I have another question, which I think you said has already been brought up, it says one from each city, and that means that Eugene would get one person and Crestwell would get one on this, is that correct?
Mayor Piercy, Councilor Taylor, that's the way that the bylaws are drafted right now, yes.
I think that's a flaw, a big flaw. Okay, thank you.
Alan?
So, George, one thing to be clear, is that this doesn't supplant the existing process, the MPC still makes six recommendations and the act makes six recommendations, so they're complementary, right, supplemental, this would supplement. So there'd actually be two recommendations going to OTC from LANE County, one from the MPC and one from the act.
Kind of like a complication to me at this point.
You could see where they would, where they would have two different recommendations going forward, and then the OTC would decide that, but I think if you follow what the mayor was saying, and you get to consensus, that means everybody agreed, and the MPC should follow suit, hopefully, as well.
I can think of one instance where that wouldn't be the case, state statute, well, the administrative rules that were adopted by ODOT for Connect Oregon funds specifically state that that recommendation comes to the OTC directly from the act.
Only?
Yes.
Okay, but not for STIP funding?
No.
Okay, so that would be only from the act. All right. Rob?
This is great packet in terms of the structure of all these different Acts, but one of the things we left out of it was, how do all the other Acts make decisions? And this has the consensus with the supermajority back.
Mayor Piercy, Councilor Zelenka, we gave you the short version of the packet, there's actually a version of the bylaws that's 29 pages long, that has the bylaws themselves in the left column, and a bunch of guidance and examples from other Acts in the right column. But to answer your question, all Acts are
I don't want to see that.
All Acts are different. To the best of my knowledge, most or all the Acts strive for consensus decision-making. And in the absence of consensus decision-making, what's done varies, some say, gee, if we can't agree, we'll just do a simple majority, Rogue Valley Acts is a 2/3 majority, Cascades West Act does a 75% majority. And again, there's some variations in there, but there's a lot of concern for making sure that all voices are heard, if there is an agreement, giving voice to minority opinions, and really striving to reach agreement. Again, everybody's competing for limited state dollars, and if you've got an area that doesn't agree, other areas are happy to pick up the slack and take those dollars.
As a follow-up on that, Mayor Piercy, Councilor Zelenka, in the second meeting of the fact LC, they had, the group had invited other act members from around the state to see how they functioned as an act, and that was one of the questions. And I remember it was Mayor Calcovan, actually, who stated that, I do believe that their act has been in effect since 1996, and she can only recall once where they ever had to take something to a vote.
That's not LANE County, is it? The, so the other one that I want to touch on was the same question that Betty was talking about, which is, it's a little, you've got this disproportionate weighting of voting to the population distribution. So obviously, the most people in LANE County live in the Springfield Eugene metro area, yet when we do this act, the rest of the county, which doesn't even come close to matching the population of the metro area, maybe only a quarter, gets four times as many votes.
I'm going to step in here and say that when you look through all the other Acts, you will find that the vast majority of them have one city, one vote, and that's because this isn't supposed to be a weighted vote, this is supposed to be everybody figuring out how to get to a place where they have enough agreement to move forward.
Yeah, I understand that, but when I look at the map, I see not very many metro areas, and the one in particular that doesn't is up in Clackamas, Portland area, and it is the metro area, which has a proportional voting.
But they don't have to do an act, we do.
Right, and they don't have to do, right. So kind of thinking forward, how's that going to play out, is that potentially going to be a disadvantage of Eugene and Springfield?
Well, just to follow up on what you said earlier, it isn't, it isn't about everyone coming to the table, and this was brought up in the fact LC several times, everyone coming to the table to get what they think they have coming to them. It's really about us competing for limited state dollars with other Acts, and can we present a united front, so to speak, on what we view as our priorities for our county, and understand that that's really what's important, and not that coastal towns get, you know, more than what the metro towns get. That's really what the purpose of that is.
Is it built in so that it's impossible for everybody but the metro area to vote for something and say, okay, in the worst case, using Bob Chawick's, the worst-case fear would be that those folks would vote to give nothing to the metro area and have it go out to the geographic areas, so the populace, where all the people are, wouldn't get served by kind of four, five, six, and seven money, and the rest of the jurisdictions would, because the act, I suppose that would get corrected at the OTC, but it sounds, is it possible for that to happen, or is there a mechanism to prevent that?
Mayor Piercy, Councilor Zelenka, I think if you look at the five projects that were submitted to Connect Oregon III, you can see how that wouldn't happen. We had a project, there were four other projects, one was from a railroad, two of them didn't rank very high, and, you know, there's a, there's one that's obviously ranked the highest. That would, if this was already going to the act, the act would be deciding how to prioritize those five projects. There weren't any more projects from the smaller cities, they just had to prioritize what was before them, and, you know, just to be quite honest, the TPC ranked the city of Eugene's project last. So luckily, it's going forward, but I don't see how that decision would have been any different under an act that has a weighted vote than it is under the current situation. Now, whether or not that would be different for STIP, it isn't supposed to work that way. There's not supposed to be a vote.
If I can add, and we'll see how this plays out, I mean, this is an organic entity that's just getting up and running, and perhaps it's important, or more important than the bylaws and what the technical rules are, is really the culture that's developed. You know, there, yes, we've got one city, one vote, but I would suspect that as decisions are made, not all voices are equal. The city of Westford, with 300 people, says, if we don't get our $50 million bypass from the city of Westford, we're going to keep voting no. It's going to carry a different weight with the group than if the city of Eugene says, we've got half the population, we've got these traffic problems, we're the economic engine. I'm not sort of trying to predict what's going to happen, but I think then discussions, you're not going to see all the small cities being locked step with each other. What's good for Florence may not be what Oak Ridge is looking for, and vice versa. Right now, they're, they're sort of united in wanting to change the current system where the county commissioners makes the decision, but once actually, all these people come together, you have to say, you get one, maybe two big projects for LANE County, what's most important? And if you say, Westford says, we want it, and Crestwell says, we want it, and Cow Works says, we want it, and you've got a project in Eugene or Springfield, you ask everybody, what's most important? I think it's going to be hard for a minority to continue assert that they should get most of the funding. I think that those things will work themselves out.
I'll just point out that in my last three seconds, that to amend the 80%, really, you need 80%.
Okay, I've got Chris and George polling, and we're, we need to wrap this up, so let's have them and get their thoughts, and then we'll
Okay. The members on the fact LC, how likely is it that these will be the people that'll wind up on the final act? Pretty likely?
That's how it was set up.
Okay, because I look at this list of folks on here, and what impresses me, I know most of these people, and I don't see anybody on here who's going to be, I think what our fear is, they're going to be the selfish, self-serving, you know, I'm going to only go for me. These are people who really, I think, can think in the larger sense, which is a good thing, because we're really talking about a transitional model for how we make decisions. It's been true in the past, we have tended to kind of approach it like a gladiatorial contest, where we all go in the room and slug it out, and somebody kills everyone else and wins. We're transitioning away from that system, I think these people can do that. And the must includes that we're in the bill, I think we're in effort to try to say, okay, we don't want to have that model, how can we make sure that this process is kosher, and how can we make sure that we're successful in the outcome? And so I think these add-ins are good from that standpoint. And I, and so I think these, these add-ins are good from that standpoint. I really support the idea of trying to go for consensus. I think these people can achieve consensus most of the time, so you won't have to use that fallback very often, if at all. I think history with other acts has proven that if you're sincere in your process, you should be able to do that. So I'm inclined to be confident that this system can work, as opposed to overly skeptical that it won't work. I generally approach things that way, having been through a similar process with Rob and actually some of the other people that are involved here, which actually worked pretty well. It was a new model, and I think they're trying to do that again. You know, you expect the best from people or the worst from people, and then you try to figure out what's the best way to make sure you get the best from them. The only last thing I would say is, yeah, the debate about proportional representation versus one vote, one community has been going all the way back to, should we have a house or should we have a senate? And which one is better? I wouldn't speculate which one is better. They're different. And so I think, in a collaborative process, you don't have to necessarily have proportional representation, because in a collaborative process, that's not really necessary, that's what you work towards. So I'm sure they'll have a lot of things they have to work through, but I'm confident that, knowing these people, I think they can make a lot of good progress.
George Poling?
Well, I was looking at the proposed membership structure and, and thinking of one, one city, one representative. It's possible that a city, there's at least one city could have three city councils on this, on this membership. Yeah, I was looking back here on page 71 of our AIS. For example, the MPO says, "Need not be an elected official." I think it should be, should not be an elected official. Highway 126 East has an elected official from the city of Springfield. Again, I think it should specifically state that it, that it not be an elected city official, because then you're going to get more than one city, one vote. And I think it should stay that way. So I don't know how to approach that, but, you know, there's a possibility, for example, that Springfield could actually end up with three elected city officials.
We'll bring that, we'll bring that to the meeting. That's a good point. And if you look through this and you think of anything else, just, it's Wednesday, so it's coming right up, but, but not till 5:00 on Wednesday. Right. So please, take another look, and if you have any other thoughts or ideas, we'd be glad to, to hear from you on those. Other than that, I hear, I don't hear any consensus, so to speak, on any, I hear a lot of thoughts. All right, so with that, I'm going to close the meeting, and we will meet over in the other room in a couple minutes.